What are we waiting on?
Jeffrey.
Uh.
I know he's there and trying, so I'm waiting, but if I. Give it a couple more minutes and then we'll just start.
I have someone texting me that's having trouble getting on. Or I assume a lot of people are having trouble getting on, or you don't know?
I don't know. I think the issue with Jeffrey is because he had to. My account last night because I had issues at West Point. Um. So I think that's the issue. He's still stuck as me. It's always a problem. I had, there are a bunch of callers in here, Dawn, so I don't know if.
Okay.
Other issues.
Testing back.
I just got a confirmation from a council to start the meeting, so Jeffrey will enter when he enters. So we're gonna start in about thirty seconds, council members. Thanks for your patience here. Thank you for joining the City of Kingston's Common Council at our monthly council meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 2nd. My name is Andrea Schott. Before we begin, we would like to go over a few guidelines to help us navigate the system as efficiently and respectfully as possible. We ask that members of the public impressed remain muted and off camera for the length of meeting. As organizer, I reserve the right to mute anyone who unmutes themselves. Council members and city staff will click their own mute button. Good practice would be to mute yourself if you are not speaking to avoid background noise and feedback. All of our meetings are recorded. Both video and written transcriptions will be made available to the public on the city's website. If you have any audio issues, send a text message to the following number, eight four five five nine four six one two zero, or send a chat. The Q and A on this webinar and. Please note that phone calls will not be answered in the meeting. However, the number again to text is eight four five five nine four six one two zero. As the organizer, I reserve the right to lock and pause the meeting to eject anyone who has behaved inappropriately. Lastly, at tonight's meeting, we have an attendance corp counsel Kevin Bryant and city clerk Elisa Tinti and deputy clerk Dee Sills. Council members will be announced during our roll call in a few minutes. Thank you for your patience, especially with our late start here. And I, oops, let's go ahead and now turn the floor over to, but I guess I turned the floor over to me. This meeting is now called to order at seven forty eight P M. on March 2nd, two thousand and twenty one. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. May I please have roll call?
Alderman Ventura morale?
He might be as the third me. Jeffrey, if you're here, you could unmute yourself. Alright, we'll say excused.
Alderman Coop?
Here.
Alderman Scott Childress?
President.
Alderman Worthington?
Here.
Alderman Tolloman?
Here.
Alderman Davis?
Here.
Alderman O'Reilly?
Here.
Alderman Chabot?
Yeah.
Alderman Hirsch?
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Can I have a motion? To dispense with the minutes of the previous meeting and approve same motion by Tony Davis, second by Rennie Scott Childress. All in favor? Opposed. Motion is adopted eight to zero. Can I have a motion dispensed with the reading of the general bills? Motion by Rennie Scott Childress, second by Michelle Hirsch, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution, our motion is adopted eight to zero. We now enter into the public speaking portion of the meeting. Uh, we have two speakers signed up. I don't see names, just phone numbers for some reason tonight, so I'm going to have to. Get all to unmute themselves. The first speaker is Jean Jacobs. So Jean, when you're. To talk, please join us.
Andrea, I just want to alert you that I'm getting texts from someone who should have video link, but it's not working. Just until Kyle can know.
Sure, I will.
Oh my gosh.
Let Kyle know. Uh, Jean, is that you?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Hi, Jean. If you could just say your name and address for the record and you could address the council at this point.
Absolutely. Good evening, President Schott, members of the common council and public, if you are listening. And thanking Elisa Tinty for all of her work as the clerk. Um, I'll be brief. I want to address a couple of subjects, uh, so I'll be respectful of time as you're starting late. Um, I'd like to clear up some misconceptions this evening. That has to do with Kingston area public access. The reason I'm bringing it up is because it's been a topic I've been listening and I feel I have twenty years experience in this field. Six years as a producer and the president of Friends of Public Access. So. I will tell you, I put an extraordinary amount of time, my professional time into this. And there's no paycheck at the end of the day, but that's fine because it's for the people in the city of Kingston. So on the thirtieth of September, I had the opportunity, and I deal with facts. That's what I deal with. I had the opportunity to speak with Lori Ann Mullen. She's the utility analyst for the Office of Telecom Communications. Department of Public Service, three Empire State Plaza, Albany, New York. I talked to her for about an hour. She forwarded all very important documents to me, which I will go over briefly. These are the facts. These are, this is what relates to. Kingston area public access and the current situation we're facing. So in nineteen ninety nine, the franchise agreement was transferred from. P I C of New York to Time Warner Cable. The city. Was informed of the transfer of ownership June ninth nineteen ninety nine with a letter from Time Warner Cable directed to. Mayor T R Gallo from Brenda Parks. I worked with Brenda Parks. I'll jump in here a little bit. I worked with Brenda Parks for years. Um, when she was in her position with Time Warner Cable. So that was somewhat the beginning. Okay. So now we fast forward. And the franchise agreement with Time Warner Cable and the city of Kingston. Was renegotiated and signed by respective parties on March thirtieth, two thousand and seven. So from two thousand and seven until March two thousand and seventeen, you had a franchise agreement. The city of Kingston was collecting a franchise agreement every year, currently at four hundred and ten thousand. That goes into the general fund. Okay, so the state, state of New York Public Service Contract on February twenty seventh, two thousand and seven. The case number, order approved, renewal issued effective March thirtieth, two thousand and seven for ten years. I have that all in writing. And the next time the franchise agreement was due to be signed was March thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. Okay, fast backward a little to two thousand and sixteen when Mayor Noble called a public hearing at City Hall on the twentieth of December. And Time Warner Cable was there with their sonographer taking notes. You must have a public hearing before you sign the franchise agreement. We held that public hearing. I attended it and spoke. Mayor Noble, of course, spoke and Mr. Richter spoke. Members of the council were in attendance. As of my discussion with Lori Ann Mullen. Uh, the franchise agreement was never signed in March of two thousand and seventeen. So currently we are dealing with an unsigned franchise agreement. And this has been brought up over and over again. The last thing I heard was, we have no agreement. Well, that's false. We absolutely did have an agreement. I just read it to you. It was very involved, intricate and well defined. So with that said, I'm going to forward all of this to all of the aldermen and Mrs. Tinty. So you have it for your file, so you have records. Um, and I think it's very important because just like tonight, I mean, not, no pun intended, respectful of all of you, of course. But we started the meeting very late, confusion, problems, whatever. And we all know TV is still one of the number one communication in the country. So. That's my, that's my point on um, public access. And I would like to now go to, and I'll be brief, I would like to go to resolution forty one. The ratification, ratifying the police reform that um, you received on the twenty sixth of January. And it has to go to Governor Cuomo. So I'm going to read something to you quickly. I have reviewed Engage Kingston today, and I must say I'm impressed engaging with the stakeholders, all twenty three thousand of us. Is a critical component in developing the governor's police reform, or many other issues that deserve a dialogue with all residents. Therefore, a survey should have been created here and advertised to the public through a press release locally in the media involving all stakeholders. And responses shared with all residents. Sadly, this did not occur, and this was defined and outlined explicitly in Andrew Cuomo's police reform. The current police reform completed and forwarded to the mayor on one twenty six twenty one only divides our community all the more. Please read the governor's police reform in its entirety, and yes, your committee did choose topics to screen in on. But the role of all the task force members was to collect local data and engage with your community stakeholders. And build on trust, unity and transparency going forward together. And the hundred thousand dollars in the budget twenty twenty one could have been spent. On the survey, which would have proved more valuable in obtaining data for your research. The police reform also states that whole public forums has to be approved by the community and the stakeholders. We have to address the tensions and lack of trust between our communities and the law enforcement that serves. That serves them. This is a time for leadership and action. Local elected officials must work together with the community. And their police forces to develop and implement reforms for a safer policing standard. Collaborative is the key word in the reform. It would be a shame to frame these discussions in an adversarial process or an effort to impose to down solutions. Issues must be aired, but solutions must be crafted. The success and safety of our society depends on restoring and strengthening mutual trust. With crime growing in many cities, we must seize the moment of crisis and turn it into an opportunity for transformation. Thank you for the opportunity to offer my statement, and I thank all of you for your participation. But I cannot support the new guidance for police reform collaborative to reinvent and modernize policing as presented. Thank you for listening. I would hope in the immediate future, a survey could be crafted to engage with all the stakeholders. Mr. Strong stated virtually that this could be a long range plan, five to ten years. In this timeframe of planning, there should always be a budget outlining the need, the assessment, needs assessment, excuse me. Goals, personnel assigned to the goals, timeline and budgetary costs, governance and management at all phases. I read that to you tonight because I hope um, that you all have had the opportunity, not only to read the final report, but also see how it's aligned. With the governors, because he's going to be examining all these reports. And I'm sure he's going to have questions if they do not align with his recommendations. So therefore, um, that's what I have to say about the police task force. Resolution forty three, I sent all of you. Um, I hopefully by one, one the other day, uh, with regard to the transfer of Care Street. And I'm not going to say anything tonight. It's not fair to take up your time. But I outlined important factors that relate to um. How I look at it is, you have to look at the future. And you have, speculation is, is a very big word, has a powerful meaning. And are we, what are we basing speculation on? We have many projects that have failed and are failing. And that's taxpayers' dollars, ladies and gentlemen. That's a short. I'll write it. I'll post it. I'll send it again, and I, I thank you for that. Um, the last thing, the resolution number thirty. I spoke to this last night, has to do with the six thousand dollars overtime. Now, I'm sure that I'm, I'm respectfully saying this, so this is nothing to anyone, because I respect people in their positions, but. When you have an overage like that, there's a reason. Because none of the Kingston employees were furloughed. Everyone still had their jobs. Yes, we've been dealing with COVID. I understand that completely, completely. But some were working from home, some were not. But six thousand dollars tells me you either need more help because grants bring in the money. They bring in the dough. We need grant writers. We need that department. It's a survival. If there's a match, you have to follow. The quarterly reports. It's a very tedious job. How do I know that? I did it for thirteen years. So, but if you have overtime. And they can't do their job, you can look at overtime as the possibility of why overtime? Why can't you get your job done? So I think you have to look at anything that comes in when it relates to employee overtime. It can equate to many areas of concern, also. Complementing them, of course, on what they do, because it's a hard job. So that's my comments this evening. I thank you for your time. Um, Kingston area public access. I will forward those documents to all of you, so you have the most updated facts in front of you. Thank you for the opportunity. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Jean. Uh, the other speaker actually texted me that she wasn't able to come to the meeting tonight, so we are going to. I haven't heard from any other speakers, so we are going to close public speaking for the evening. We now claim some communications. Hearing no discussion, they will be on file in the clerk's office. Can I get a motion to dispense with the second reading of the general bills and pay same? Motion by Rennie Scott Childress, second by Patrick O'Reilly. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is adopted eight zero, although I realize I forgot to mention that Alderman Jeffrey Ventura morale is in attendance. Worked through the tech issues, so Elisa, can you please note that? And from now on, we'll have nine members for all the votes. Thank you. And I knew I was going to forget, Kevin. We now enter into the report of committee, starting with resolution number twenty eight.
Resolution twenty eight of two thousand and twenty one. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, referring the amendment of the definition of hotel. In the city of Kingston zoning code to the H L P C, City of Kingston Planning Board and the Ulster County Planning Board.
On the question? Alderman Michelle Hirsch?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, the reason I introduced this legislation is to align our definition of hotel motel. Within the various parts of our municipal code, so that it comports with the county's definition of hotel motel. Um, and the following definition also appears in resolution number thirty five uh, for this evening. Hotel and motel, a building or portion of it which is regularly used and kept open for lodging of transient guests on an overnight basis. The term hotel and or motel includes short term rentals. An apartment, hotel, motocore or inn, tourist cabins, boarding house. Or club or similar hotel or motel type of accommodations by whatever name designated. Whether or not meals are served and shall include these facilities. Commonly known as bed and breakfast and short term rentals. As the definition of hotel appears in our zoning code, we must send uh, this definition, this definition out for referral. To the Ulster County Planning Board, the City of Kingston Planning Board and the H L P C. And I just would like to thank my colleagues for joining me in passing this piece of legislation and resolution number thirty eight. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Patrick O'Reilly?
Hi, Patrick O'Reilly. You know, it's important when tourists come to Ulster County. Um, that, that they know what they're getting into and, you know, a standardized uh. Hotel uh, definition now helps, helps the tourist industry to help us. So this can only be a good thing uh, to keep people um, knowing that when they come to Ulster County, they're gonna. They're gonna have the same standard set as they do everywhere else in Ulster County. So that's, that's a nice thing, even in the city of Kingston. Now, we have to take a look at the tax structure and make sure that they don't feel like the city of Kingston is doing something different to them there. So that would be something we might want to take a look into too. Michelle, I don't know if you've looked into the tax structure. Or what fees or taxes are being paid, hotel taxes, and if they're any different than the counties, but maybe we want to try to get that in line too. Uh, because tourism, let's face it, that's one of our huge industries here in Ulster County and uh. Uh, the better, the better that the hotel industry is, the more tourists will come, and it's all positive stuff. Thank you, Michelle, for proposing.
Michelle Hirsch?
Yes, may I respond to Alderman O'Reilly through President?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the reason we're aligning the definition is to match the county's definition. Uh, so because the county's definition um. Shows that they create, they are the ones that collect the hotel bed tax. So. All of these uh. Places in the city of Kingston will be paying that same hotel bed tax to the county.
Anyone else on the question? Hearing no more discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed, resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to resolution number twenty nine.
Resolution twenty nine of two thousand and twenty one. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for a two thousand and twenty transfer in the engineering department in the amount of thirty five thousand, three hundred and forty three dollars and sixteen cents. From contingency to pay C X S rep, C S X railroad fees relating to a city storm drain project.
On the question? Hearing no, Alderman Patrick O'Reilly?
Yeah, I think a little background is necessary on this. This appears to be a uh, a lost invoice that we're paying for at a later date. Uh, I just think people should know about that. It was found, I guess, and uh, found that we owe the money, and now we're paying. Exactly. Hopefully that's correct.
Thank you, Patrick. Anybody else? Hearing no more discussion, all in favor? Opposed, resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to resolution number thirty, please.
Resolution thirty of two thousand and twenty one. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for a two thousand and twenty one transfer in the grants management department. In the amount of six thousand dollars to pay the cost of overtime.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Oppo, opposed, resolution is adopted nine to zero. Resolution, moving to resolution number thirty one, please.
Resolution thirty one of two thousand and twenty one. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for a two thousand and twenty one interdepartmental transfer in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred dollars. In the comptroller's department to balance the budget.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed, resolution is adopted nine to zero. Resolution number thirty two, please.
Resolution thirty two of two thousand and twenty one. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for a two thousand and twenty transfer in the planning department. In the amount of sixty five dollars to cover the cost of overrun and advertising expenses.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed, resolution adopted nine to zero. Moving to resolution number thirty three, please.
Resolution thirty three of two thousand and twenty one. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for a two thousand and twenty one transfer in the city clerk's building maintenance budget. In the amount of twenty three thousand, six hundred and twenty seven dollars for carryover of unspent grant monies from Nicerna Clean Energy Communities Grant Project.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, for the vote, all in favor? Opposed, resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to resolution number thirty four, please.
Resolution thirty four of two thousand and twenty one. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for a two thousand and twenty one transfer in the fire department. In the amount of thirty three. in the amount of thirty-three thousand ninety-seven dollars and eight cents to pay out a firefighter who retired in January of two thousand twenty one.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to resolution for thirty five, please.
Resolution thirty four.
I'm sorry. Alderman Steve Shabbitt, did you have your hand up?
I just want to say Pat, Patrick had his hand up. I think he had a question.
Thank you. Sorry, I missed that. Alderman Patrick O'Reilly?
I just wanted to thank that firefighter for his years of service to the city of Kingston. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I missed you. All right, so we are on resolution number thirty five, please.
I think we're on thirty. Yeah, you're right, I'm sorry. Resolution thirty five of two thousand twenty one. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, adopting a uniform definition of hotel in the city code of the city of Kingston to reflect the Ulster County definition.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to resolution thirty six, please.
Resolution thirty six of two thousand twenty one. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the city of Kingston to enter into and execute an intermunicipal agreement for the sharing of information for short-term rental properties with the county of Ulster.
On the question? Alderman Michelle Hirsch?
Yes, I introduced this piece of legislation also in relation to short-term rentals so that we can enter into an agreement, intermunicipal agreement with Ulster County as they collect data to provide to municipalities an inventory of all rentals, properties within this that will be identified as advertising short-term rentals and pay the county bed tax. As the council begins to gather data to learn how many short-term rentals are located in the city and paying the county bed tax, I think it's important that we have this data before crafting any further legislation. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing no more discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to resolution number thirty seven, please.
Resolution thirty seven of two thousand twenty one. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, amending the zoning ordinance to rezone seventy-nine Hurley Avenue, tax map number four eight point seven one dash two dash one one from zero dash two limited off office to C dash two commercial district, Higginsville Station LLC owner applicant and accepting comments by the Ulster County Planning Board and the City of Kingston Planning Board.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I will call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to resolution number thirty nine, please.
Resolution thirty eight of two thousand twenty one.
Sorry. I'm sorry about that.
Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the release of the restriction in the deed for one sixty-two to one eighty-eight Fourth Avenue, requiring that the property cannot be sold in the future without common council consent.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I will call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Now moving to resolution number thirty nine.
Resolution thirty nine of two thousand twenty one. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, reallocating ninety-five thousand dollars of the city of Kingston's round one fiscal year two thousand nineteen CDBG dash CV funding.
On the question? Alderman Steve Shabbitt, please.
Thank you. I'd just like to give a little, little shout out to, to the community development committee to deal with that. Even these things would seem, seem kind of small, reallocating some funds that were not used. There's still a lot of work that goes into this. We had special meetings for this. You know, it, we have to keep track of money that, that's not being spent and, and reallocate it so it doesn't build up. This, it all adds up to a lot of work. This is particularly the second COVID round. We're into our, our next round, so over the past year, this is uh, we're going into our fourth round here, so and sometimes it doesn't look like a lot, you know, when you look at this resolution, but a lot goes into, a lot of thought. I appreciate everybody with, with members of the committee, other members of the council who come to the meetings and sit in and offer suggestions and support. It's really a, a community event. I appreciate everybody's hard work. Thanks.
Thanks, Steve. I know everybody appreciates your leadership, too. Anybody else on the question? Hearing no more discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to resolution number forty.
Resolution forty of two thousand twenty one. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, reallocating fiscal year two thousand twenty CDBG funding, a total of eighty-seven thousand four hundred dollars from YMCA Y Park and Midtown Rising Indoor Basketball Court at CAUMC to Parks and Recreation Parking Improvements Phase One.
On the question? Alderman Tony Davis, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderman, I would like to give a shout out to the CDBG Committee as well as Mayor Noble and for recognizing that these parks need much more improvement. And I want to say a special shout out to the committee and the mayor for, and real, and for allocating money to Block Park and a park that's in despair and has been, in my opinion, not, not booked at for a long time for improvements. So I'm glad that money, and some of this money is going to be used to make improvements at Block Park. And I hope in the future that we have some more money in being dedicated to that park and, and the city of Kingston community. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Alderwoman Rita Worthington, please.
Hi, thank you, Madam President. Um, shout out to Aldo, Alderman Shabbitt for his leadership in the CDBG community development. It's a testament to your leadership, the reason why this runs so smoothly. So I appreciate you. I just wanted to say that. But I also wanted to say, in case people were not listening at caucus last night, you might want to, maybe it might make sense to explain why we are reallocating these monies from the Y Park and as well as the indoor basketball court over at Clayton Avenue.
Alderman Steve Shabbitt, would you like the floor again?
Yes, just trying to unmute myself here. This came from, from two projects. The basketball court for Midtown Rising couldn't be accomplished because Midtown Rising no longer has the basketball court there. So we really can't go in there and put in the basketball put in there if nobody can use it. From the YMCA, their Y Park, unfortunately, you know, they had trouble really putting together documents we needed in order to complete the project. So the project had, then the money was available for, for some other use.
Thank you. Anybody else on the question? Hearing no more discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to resolution number forty one, please.
Resolution forty one of two thousand twenty one. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, ratifying the Public Safety Task Force proposal.
On the question? Alderman Tony Davis?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to thank all the people that are on the committee and this task force committee, as well as Lester Strong for being the organizer of this. And a lot of time, and a lot of time was put in by each member that was selected to be on this committee. And, you know, so again, a lot of time was put in, a lot of research was put in. And I want to thank every one of those, and task force members who gave up their time and to try to come up with, to come up with a, a report and that would show some of the things that need to be improved in the city of Kingston in regard to police tasks. And so, and I also want to give a shout out to the police department for some of the things, for many things that were found that they are doing right. And again, this task force was just trying about, trying to make that, and police and the community and work hand in hand, and to try to get improvements between the community and the local police and force. So, and right now, this is being ratified. It has not, there's nothing in here that says has to be adopted at this time. And we are still doing, having conversations and discussions about what might be adopted in this report. And that again, I want to thank all the task force members and Lester Strong and for, and all their time that they put into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you for being the council liaison for this. That was a lot of work. I saw a few hands up, so we'll start with Alderman Rennie Scott Childress. And move to Alderman Jeffrey Ventura Morrell. So, Rennie?
Alderman Shabbitt was before I was.
All right, we'll start with Alderman Steve Shabbitt.
Oh, I thank you very much. Actually, pretty much, I'm just, you know, reiterating what Tony said. I mean, this was a lot of work, you know. But it should be understood, we're only voting tonight to accept this report. It, it doesn't mean we agree or disagree or anything else. This is a plan that we're looking at moving forward. My, and I certainly agree, there's been a lot of work put in. I appreciate everybody doing the work. So we will gladly accept the report and then we will begin looking at it and what we think is, is best. But as Tony says, actually, I read some things that the city police seem to be already moving forward, a couple things. So anyway, thanks for, for everybody's hard work.
All right, now Alderman Rennie Scott Childress.
Thank you. Rennie Scott Childress here, yes. I'd like to echo my fellow Alder folks here. Work of the committee, huge, most law of research. And I want to, I think, releasing that we're not really touched on in the report. A lot of those referring, mutual experiences of our police forces and you know, history. I think to what actually happened in the Kingston Police Department that's separate national news, because I think our police department has done good work in terms of developing, in, in the community, more work needs to get what we really want to do streets.
You done, Rennie? You were cutting in and out a little bit there, so.
Yeah, well, the, the, the really, the really good part of what I said was while I was off the thing. I just want to note that we're at the beginning here. And I look forward to working with everybody in the community across the entire spectrum of folks with different ideas, different approaches to policing. We all need to be in this together. We need to listen to each other, and we need to find a way forward together. So I see this as a beginning, and I look forward to working with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Last hand I saw up was Alderman Jeffrey Ventura Morrell.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to echo my colleagues' sentiments and thanking, first of all, Lester Strong and the task force, members of the police commission, police chief Tinty, and the mayor for all their hard work. But I also want to thank the members of the community who came to the public hearing, wrote letters, everybody that was engaged in this process. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anybody else on the question? Alderwoman Rita Worthington.
Thank you, Rita Worthington here. Yeah, and I also want to throw in that, you know, I just want the community and the public to know that we're taking this very seriously. We're really looking at these recommendations, although they're just being ratified, that doesn't mean that we're not going to continue look at, looking at them to see what can be implemented and what cannot be implemented. And on, on a side note, prior to entering into a common council meeting tonight, I just met with members of the state police as well as Chief Tinty. And so I want the public to know that while there is a lot of work to do with bringing and bridging that gap between community and law enforcement, I just want you to know that they are, they're, they're interested and that they too want to see this community heal from everything that's been happening in the city of Kingston. We love the city of Kingston, both sides, law enforcement as well as your elected officials. So just wanted to let you know that we are taking these recommendations seriously. We'll continue to look, and it is our goal to bridge that gap. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing no more, oh, Alderman Patrick O'Reilly, sorry. You always wait until the last minute to raise your hand. I almost miss you.
Thanks, Andrea. Patrick O'Reilly. You know, I'd just like to, you know, recognize everybody worked hard on this, but, you know, our police force here in the city of Kingston is above the curve here on this, on, on, on all of this. They've gone through training, restorative justice training. They've gone to meetings, endless, you know, the, the police chief comes to any meeting you want him to come to. He's been very good about that. The police officers have gone to the trainings without hesitation. So anything we've asked of them, they, they've pretty much done, and I have to say kudos to them. I don't think there's any police department in New York State, in the entire state, that is more willing to, to work on the communication between the citizens and the police force. We, we are very lucky to have this police department here and, and how forward-thinking they, they really truly are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to resolution number forty two, please.
Resolution forty two of two thousand twenty one. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to expend funds in the first instance for multiple U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Community Development block grant funded awards for parks improvement projects.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, Alderman Jeffrey Ventura Morrell?
I just want to say, what was said before, I want to thank the mayor, but especially Steve Shabbitt for his leadership on this committee and also Mandy Brook and Amy Peterson of the Economic Development Office for their hard work. They, Steve and Amy and Mandy are the reason this, this process runs so smoothly, so I want to thank them all.
Anyone else? Hearing no more discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to resolution forty three, this one needs a super majority, so we'll do a long roll on it. But resolution forty three, please.
Resolution forty three of two thousand twenty one. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the transfer of twenty-one North Front Street to the Kingston to the Kingston Local Development Corporation pursuant to section one four one one of the not-for-profit corporation law.
On the question? Alderman Steve Shabbat.
Thank you. Just like everybody know, since last night's caucus, I have had discussions with our, our vote tonight is to transfer the property to the KLDC. All further decisions, including a bidding process, will be conducted by KLDC with no input from the Common Council. On that basis, I will be casting a vote on this resolution tonight.
Alderman Rennie Scott Childress.
Thank you. I just need to confirm that all of the members of the Common Council have received the twelve documents that we entered into the record last night and that are posted as attachments to the resolution that's available on the web. Yes. Okay, thank you. And then I would like to note that we'll incorporate, we're incorporating these into the record for the purpose of determining the resolution. So our decision tonight is based on these documents that are available to the public. These include things like the seeker form filled out by the planning board, various studies done as part of that process, and the other documents that are related there. So I look forward to voting in favor of this as a means of increasing the public good of that particular piece of property. So, thank you.
Alderman Jeffrey Ventura Morrell.
Thank you, Madam President. I've really wavered on this issue since the public hearing and due to the comments made by the members of the KLDC, I will be a no vote on this. I believe this has nothing to do with my my thoughts about the project itself. It doesn't mean that I disapprove of the project. It just means that I think the transfer of city property to a private developer should be something that's handled by the council. And for that reason, I will vote no on this.
Anyone else? Alderwoman Rita Worthington and then Alderman Don Tolloman.
Thank you, Rita Worthington here. Yeah, you know, I've been on a fence about this all day today and even before today. And although I've read all of the documents, I've listened to what everyone said, you know, the two, the things that worry me most is that members of the KLDC have issues with it. And, you know, our, our action tonight is to transfer this property to them and, but members from that same entity has, has issues. So, and I must be honest right now, I'm not even sure of what my vote will be when the roll call comes around. And so I'm just concerned about some issues. Has nothing to do with, you know, the private developers or who they are or anything like that. I think that, as I, as I mentioned, the only thing that stands out to me is the comments from public comment on what I heard from the members of the KLDC. So I have to say, I'm still on a fence right now. So, my comment.
I think, I do see a hands up. I have Don first and then we'll do Rennie and Tony.
Go before me because I already spoke, that's okay.
Alderman Don Tolloman.
Hi, Don Tolloman here. So I want to just say that the public has, you know, the public process has been great here. The public, a lot has been said, both for and against this and, you know, it's been a great process. And I think everybody's benefited by it. I want to just comment to the point that Jeffrey and Rita brought up. You know, the idea of the transfer, my perception is that from the very beginning, when the city proposed this project, that sort of is, was a, you know, a, an assumption that why would the city, you know, ask for development of this project, of this property if the developer wouldn't be able to control the property? You know, so to me, this is sort of, it goes without saying that the property would have to be transferred and, and you know, we knew that from the start. And so, you know, I don't think the developer would have ever gone through all of this trouble and all the, all the planning that they've done and the conversations that this, they thought this was even a question. It was just assumed that this was part of the project. So to me, it's, it should clearly be, be, you know, be okayed and, and I'm going to vote yes on this question.
Thank you. Alderman Tony Davis, and then we'll go back to Rennie.
Thank you, Madam President. And to reiterate what Don Tolloman is saying, and if you read the fine print and the documentation of when this RFP went out years ago, the part of the RFP was that the garage was going to be part of it, the parking lot was going to be part of it. And as Don stated, not, no one would have gone into this six years ago, or however gone it's been, in not thinking that they were going to be able to get the parking lot that was part of the RFP. The speak, people have spoken. They did a survey and the majority of the people in the City of Kingston wanted something to be developed with that parking garage and some of their property around that. And for us to have this developer who has now gone in four to six years into it, for us to say, we're not going to, we don't want to give you the parking garage, even though that was part of the RFP, it's, it's, it's goes, goes back against everything. And if that was the case, we should never had, had this survey or put out a RFP and we were going to decide and that the person, the developer, whoever it might be, it wasn't going to get the parking garage, which is part of it. Also, in regard to the KFLDC, I believe there's eight to twelve people on that board. And at the public hearing, I believe I heard from two people who are on the KLDC that had concerns about that. And so the majority of the people of the KLDC, I have not heard publicly speak stating that they were against against transferring or the property being transferred to KLDC. So yes, it was, I believe, two people from the KLDC who spoke and stated they were against it. But again, there, that is not the majority. And again, I believe it's eight to ten people on this, on this commissioner board and that had not spoken publicly that they were against this transfer. So that's what I wanted to say. But I, I, I respect anybody's, whatever vote, way that you're going to vote, and I respect that. But I will be a yes vote.
We have Alderman Rennie Scott Childress, then we'll come back around to Jeffrey.
Thank you. Rennie Scott Childress here. The KLDC is the proper method for doing this. This is why LDCs are created, in order to help develop local community economies. This is the sort of thing that LDCs do all the time, transferring property in order to increase the public good. I'd like to also point out, there was a third member who has KLDC experience who spoke at the public hearing, the former chair of the KLDC, who has much more experience than either of the two people who spoke with some concerns from the KLDC. And he spoke very much in favor of this process of moving the property to the KLDC. And like Tony, I think it was, mentioned, the original RFQ envisions precisely this process of transferring that piece of property to the developer in order to turn it into a greater public good. I'd like to note too, in the larger context, that this is part of a larger housing project that we've been embarked on, at least since I've been on the Common Council. We have approved in various ways numerous projects for affordable housing. We had a big fight when we tried to approve the housing that became the Alms House project. A lot of controversy over that, but we stood fast because we knew that the community needs affordable housing. We approved a pilot for the E Square property. We approved two pilots for the takeover by KNR of the two older, the facilities for our older residents, the Yasmin Towers and the Governor Clinton. We've recently been involved in approving the property transfer by the county of the old jail site for workforce and affordable housing out on the old jail site. That is an LDC. This is the proper process to follow for doing this sort of a project. So now, the context of housing here is that we also need middle-income housing. We've done a lot of work at the low end. This is done at the middle of the affordability range. And the problem here is that, you know, RUCO can spend three hundred thousand dollars per unit to build E Square because they're able to take advantage of different kinds of state and federal monies, whereas a private developer has to use their own money. So the vast majority of the hotel and the living space, this is going to be built with loans and other money secured by the developer. The public places, public spaces, the plaza and the parking garage are underwritten in various ways by public monies. So transfer to the KLDC is the proper process for doing this, and it's been envisioned this way from the beginning. Thanks.
Alderman Jeffrey Ventura Morrell.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to clarify that what's before us is not whether this property gets transferred to a developer or not. The issue we're discussing today is whether this property gets transferred to the KLDC so they can handle a transfer to a developer. I, for one, believe that the Common Council should be in charge of what the terms of the transfer of public property to a private developer should be. And that is why I'm voting no, not because I don't think the developer should get this property. That is not relevant to a question before us. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Alderwoman Michelle Hirsch.
Yes, Alderwoman Hirsch. I just want to state that I know that should the development not occur, this property will be reverted back to the City of Kingston.
Thank you. Anybody else on the question? Hearing no one else, I'll call for the vote. It's a long roll, please.
Alderman Ventura Morrell.
No.
Alderman Coop.
Alderman Coop?
Alderman Scott Childress?
Yes.
Alderman Worthington?
Yes.
Alderman Tolloman?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman O'Reilly?
Yes.
Alderman Shabbat?
Yes.
Alderman Hirsch?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted eight to one. We now move to reading of local law. And I lost the local law number one. This is just the first reading, so there's no action.
Local Law One of two thousand twenty-one of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing an amendment to Local Law Two of two thousand, two thousand, amending Planning Board Chapter ninety-six, Section ninety-six dash one, composition, terms, vacancies, removal of the code of the Cleveland, Kingston.
Thank you. We'll have the second reading of that next month. This concludes our communications and it will conclude our council meetings. Does anybody else, before we adjourn, have anything else? Alderman Tony Davis?
Yes, Madam President, I would like to close the meeting in honor of Janet Carroll Kennedy, and who formerly lived in Kingston here on Gate Street, who passed away on Tuesday, February sixteenth and at her home with her family by her side. And Janet was fixed her on Gate Street before her and her husband moved to Greensboro, North Carolina. She was married to Robert Kennedy and she was a programmer at IBM for many years and then decided to go back and have a second career by attaining her master degree, Masters of Education degree from SUNY New Paltz. And she went on to work at the Sullivan County Bolsies, serving as a teacher of special education and into her retirement in two thousand and ten. Janet is survived by her husband, Robert Kennedy, her children Angela Kemp and Robert Kennedy and his wife Lucia, Paul Kennedy of Kingston and Carrie Kennedy Rosera and her husband Alex of North Carolina and many other siblings. So I wanted to close the meeting in her honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alderwoman Michelle Hirsch.
Yes, I'd like to close in honor of County Legislature Dave Donaldson's mother, Charlene Donaldson, who passed away on February eleventh at Golden Hill Nursing Home. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, hearing nobody else, I will take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Tony Davis, second by Patrick. All in favor?
I.
We hereby stand adjourned until the next regularly scheduled meeting on April sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Thank you all and thanks again for your patience in the beginning.
Good to meet you to everyone.